Starting as soon as everybody gets here. And I've lost my pen, so I gotta find her. Just waiting on David. After the house speaking thing, you should know this meeting is being recorded.
Michelle, your speaker is really bad.
Your audio is difficult. It was good at the beginning, but now it's difficult.
Yeah, the microphone.
I mean, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The sound here. So you should know that this meeting is being recorded. You should know that this meeting is being held remotely per the emergency order.
Yeah.
So you're fading.
You're fading.
Okay, so I'm gonna switch to the iPad and I will be right back.
Michelle, when you're back like that, we could hear you better. When you get closer, we can't hear you. There's something with your microphone that when you're on top of it, you don't hear as well as when you're back.
Can you hear me here?
Mm hmm.
Perfect.
And I'll just stand back here. I've got a little problem with the power cord, so I'm trying to hold it with one hand, so I'll just try and work on. So it's being recorded. You should know it's being held remotely per the emergency order of the governor. The people who are remote are Michelle Bailey, Dana Alara, Michelle Horgan, Anastasia, Peter Walzick, and Stacy Matternick. So, and we do expect David Toledo to come to this meeting remotely shortly. All right, so I wanna open up the meeting with just an opening comment. We are all living in a very fluid and historic time, and we are all trying our best to do what's right for our community. And when doing that, it can be very difficult to separate a lot of the emotions that are going on, whether it's worried about your personal safety, your child's personal safety, the safety of others, the safety of the community, or just the generic safety in general. So we're here today really just for two purposes. One is to approve the different plans, like what happens if our school opens with everybody in school, which we've learned we can't do unless we can eliminate spacing? What will our school look like if we open in a hybrid model? And what will our school look like if we open in a remote model? And then in addition to that, because of the nature of what is going on right now, we are being open to the concerns of the community, and the state has asked that we offer some way that families can opt out but still get resources from the district, and that we don't force everybody to be a homeschooler if they don't feel safe coming to school. So we will look at that also today. And then the other thing that we're going to talk about is just what does it look like to be safe to return to school? And how will we make the decisions about when it's safe to be in school in a hybrid way? And when is it not safe to be in school? And so we would need to be in a remote way. And so we want to remain focused on making the decisions, because we are going to try and make this decision today before 5 o'clock. All right, so we've had a lot of emails over the weekend, so we appreciate, I will classify this as having flooded our email boxes. It's been a lot to read, and we appreciate all that you have done. Because you have had so much time to actually communicate with us, we don't have time to have an hours, an hours-long meeting. So we are going to have a public comment for 20 minutes. We will follow our protocol that's in our policy, which means that no one can speak for longer than three minutes. And if you have spoken once, we're gonna ask that you not speak again. There's only been one person who has contacted me who would like to speak. So if Mary Beth, if you could allow Allison Spees, or I believe is how you say her last name, to speak. If you would like to speak, you need to click at the bottom of the, I think, is it at the bottom of the chat? No, it's at the bottom of participants. You need to click Raise Your Hand, and you will come to the top. Mary Beth will recognize you in the order she sees them. If we run out of time today, I'm sorry, but this is a meeting in public. It's not a meeting with the public, but we do wanna hear from those who have come to speak. All right, so.
Hey, Michelle, Alice is unmuted, so she is ready to speak.
Perfect. Hi, Allison.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, but I don't, you're lucky right now, because I don't have my timer started, so you might get an extra minute if you get started.
Well, I've timed my statement, so hopefully I'll be within the three minutes. My name is Allison Spees. I live at 14 Farrington Lane in South Hamilton. Thank you to the committee for taking the time to listen to citizens' comments and concerns. I recognize that everyone is working extremely hard to meet an immense range of needs. Today, I would like to speak for myself and as a representative for the petition I created in collaboration with a group of other concerned parents. In three days, our petition has received over 200 signatures from parents, teachers, and community members to support a revised return-to-school plan that prioritizes safety, equity, and quality of district-led hybrid and full-remote learning for all our students. We want to urge the district to include all of our students by providing an education based on the Hamilton Wenham curriculum, taught by Hamilton Wenham teachers for full-remote students. We thank the superintendent for presenting option EA and MA today in her exhibit. There are many legitimate reasons for parents to need or want a full-remote education for their children this year. Many kids have medical conditions that put them at greater risk for severe outcomes if they contract COVID-19. As well, it is more than reasonable at this point in the pandemic, and with a rise in cases locally, for parents to feel it is unsafe for their children to return to school in person. We therefore do not feel like we are opting out of a district education. As the superintendent stated during the last meeting, I did not opt for my children to have severe asthma, nor did I opt for this pandemic. I need my children to be educated remotely this year for their safety. I also care deeply about the health and safety of our teachers, staff, and the entire Hamilton Wenham community. I believe that not one life lost is worth the risk. So I ask you, is it morally and ethically right to exclude a group of our students from receiving a Hamilton Wenham education this year because of their need for safety? Is it not discriminatory to prioritize the education of some students over that of others? This community sacrificed a lot this summer to pass the school budget and show our commitment to the excellence a Hamilton Wenham education provides. We did not vote to educate a group of our students through a learning management system, now being called an APL, or Academy of Personal Learning. We understand the need and desire for a hybrid model, and we are not seeking to take anything away from this. We seek to enhance the hybrid model and provide a full-remote model that is based on the Hamilton Wenham curriculum and taught by our wonderful Hamilton Wenham educators. We are all in this together, and we are all responsible for the outcome. Please keep our students and community together. Thank you.
Michelle, you're muted.
Amy, Amy and Tom Starr.
Amy, you are now unmuted.
And next after that will be Lindsay W., if you just wanna have her in there.
Yep, she's all set.
Okay, hi. So this is Amy and Tom Starr. So we wanna thank you all for your hard work. And I just wanna say that, you know, I spent 30 years in publishing, and when the business was disrupted and it had to go online, we had to do a lot of this sort of planning. This is just a really hard thing for everyone to do. And we were great in our industry, but we were being asked to plan for things that we had never had to do before. And so I know that that's, that's pretty hard. But one of the things we did was we benchmarked better plans. We benchmarked what other companies were doing and, and got the best practice. And I think that that's something that we need to look at right now, so that we get a plan that matches the best plans out there. The Manchester Essex Plan, and that's, it's, that type of model is being used within a number of schools right near us. And frankly, our high school plan has a number of benefits. It has double the contact time, or increased contact time, teacher contact time, equity for all students, which ours is sorely lacking, efficient use of teachers' time, especially when we have very limited teacher resources, and their students get double the direct teacher instruction of new material each week compared to ours. Their hybrid plan has four days of direct teacher instruction compared to our two. Their hybrid plan has two days in person and two days live streaming from home, and only one day working alone. Ours has three full days working utterly alone. Also, there's more new content, because the teachers are teaching four days of new material versus the same repetitive lesson two days to two different groups. There's gonna be four days of new material taught by the teachers at their district compared to ours. Our school, our kids are gonna fall way behind. Their plan includes all students. There is no segregation and no, I think frankly, illegal discrimination in their plan. Given that we are going to all have to be remote at one point, most likely, the Manchester Essex Plan pivots really easily to, to remote. It, it just pivots seamlessly, and because the remote plan is already incorporated in the hybrid plan, the schedules will be the same for all the kids. They're gonna be predictable, maintainable, which will be soothing and steady for the students. The schedule will be the same whether it's a remote day or whether it's an in-person day. And then for the kids that are home the whole time, it's just remote the whole time. The pace of instruction will be maintained, because there's not gonna be any disruption switching between the models. You just add more days of streaming. It mirrors our high school plan, so it's very consistent across grades. And also, most likely, we're going to have periods of time where individual students, classes, groups of kids, maybe a whole school, will need to quarantine. The Manchester Essex-type plan allows that. Everyone just goes remote those days, and nobody loses direct teacher instruction for the 14 days that they're out. It's just a logical, seamless plan, and it doesn't cost anything. We don't have to hire additional teachers to do the remote teaching separately, because it's part of the plan.
Thanks, Amy.
Okay, and I would just. Okay.
Allison.
Michelle, I don't think that the, I don't think that the speakers can see you, so I don't, I don't believe that they can see.
Okay. Um, next one is Lindsay.
Lindsay W.
Yeah, and then there's Miss Garrity, Miss Garrity.
Okay, Lindsay, you should be all set.
Yep. Hi, this is Lindsay Whitman. I live at 28 Mayflower Drive in Wenham, and I wanna thank everyone who's been engaging in this discussion. It's such an enormously complex issue. And actually, my goal here is not really to make a statement one way or the other on what we should do. I just wanna provide some clarity in some of the definitions about what the online learning experience for the state remote option might look like, based on my professional experience, because I think that there's a lot of sort of misuse of language, and I wanna just clarify some of it a little bit. So first, just a little background on where that perspective comes from. I've worked or consulted to educational publishers at tech companies, online learning providers for over 20 years. I've also been involved in research and advisory work on issues of educational equity in higher ed. So, sorry, I'm speaking so quickly, but I wanna get it all in. The state has selected two potential providers that I see, I just pulled up the plan. I'm not sure what it's called in the, the plan document, but the one that involves edgenuity and FDLS. And even though people, the state's RFP, I think, called them a learning management system or an LMS, it's not an accurate representation of what they are. An LMS is, is like Google Classroom or Canvas or Moodle, and it's, it's important in online learning, but it's, it doesn't actually provide any course content or curriculum. It's actually an empty shell that the curriculum materials go into. These two online providers are probably better defined as asynchronous courseware. They are fully developed, grade-appropriate curriculums, developed by people who have master's degrees and PhD in instructional design, and, and provide the important aspects of learning, such as direct instruction, hands-on activities, interactive assignments, and assessments. But because they're asynchronous, that means all of those important components of learning are provided without live, a person delivering the curriculum. It's instead done through videos, readings, et cetera, et cetera. So teachers have a really, really important role in online learning, and just because the curriculum provides some of the things that teachers normally do, the role is different. I believe our educators have been working out how this works in our, if we went this way. And there's no one right way to do it. I wanna provide some perspective on sort of my interpretation of what it might look like, because I think everyone wants to understand what is their child's learning experience gonna be. And I'd love to know from Superintendent Bando, so this is the ballpark of what you're considering. So there's a phrase in online learning that teachers in this environment move from being a sage on the stage to a guide on the side, which is kind of a funny phrase. But what it means is that an online teacher, instead of like doing the things that we think they might be doing, they're instead checking on student progress through the curriculum, identifying areas where, areas where one or more students might be struggling and providing additional direct support. They could be identifying students who are accelerating and providing above-grade-level lessons to challenge them. At younger levels, they might be weaving in non-screen-based activities into what would be an otherwise online experience. Those are just a couple examples. I'm sure teachers are coming up with many. The teachers in this role can often manage much larger groups of students, because the work they're doing is so different. So my interpretation of the district plan is that our own Hamilton Wenham teachers would be providing this kind of oversight to a learning academy, but would love clarification on that. And just last, I will say, because I heard your thing go off, Michelle, is that the definition of educational equity is that we, that all students, regardless of race, socioeconomic status, disability, and other considerations, have access to what they need to perform at acceptable levels. I feel so strongly about this. I think it's incredibly important we have this session, but I wanna make sure, and I hope that this information they have provided helps people evaluate that question better, understanding what the learning experience might be, and make the decision what the right learning model is for your family.
And now, is Lisa Garrity in the panel now? I don't see her anymore, but she was there before.
Garrity. I don't see, in terms of hand raised.
I don't see anybody else.
I see Tricia O'Shea has raised her hand.
Okay, she can have three minutes. Yeah.
Tricia, you are all set?
Hi. Can you hear me?
We can. You're starting at three minutes.
Awesome, thank you. I just wanted to call and reiterate, um, you know, as you can see, I come from the publishing world as well, and so I'm following up Lindsay, as well as some other people that have talked. And I think the purpose isn't to say, you know, which program is right or wrong for anybody, but certainly just take a look at that email, and I was gonna forward it to you again, that Lindsay sent, that kind of defines what programs are out there, and just be open to reaching out to myself or Lindsay or other people. I know there's another woman on the phone who's worked at McGraw-Hill. We've spent years working on these kind of programs in schools and using us as a resource to educate yourself before you make that decision. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Short and sweet. All right, is that all the hands? It is, great. Okay, thank you. So the people who spoke today are just a sampling of the, I actually lost count, but it was it was a lot, a lot of emails we got in the last four days. And they, they run the entire gamut of what you heard today. So, and actually, you, you did not hear from anybody who emailed, but we did get emails from people who are like, I don't even know why we're not all going back. So, you know, it's all, it's all out there. So, because the decisions we're going to be making today require money, and also because we want to just close out the year, our Assistant Superintendent Leoni is going to just kind of wrap up the year for us, and then we will move into what's gonna be needed for this year. Thank you.
Can I, am I able to shimmy my screen? Mary Beth, I think you just.
Let me just see, give me one sec there.
Take a turn.
Okay, you should be all set, Vinnie.
Is that up for you guys?
All set.
Okay. So thank you guys for letting me speak today. Today, where our objectives are to review the FY '20 final year-end accounting. We're gonna go through and make our year-end budget transfers, as well as our year-end transportation transfer. We're also gonna look at what this effect has on our year-end E and D, and then lastly, go over our FY '21 unbudgeted expenses and transfers. So I'm gonna quickly run through the first couple slides, as many of you have already know. So on July 18th, we were notified of a forecasted year-end deficit of approximately $638,000. This was initially caused by the need of six out-of-district placements, as well as the need for an additional kindergarten classroom and a preschool classroom. Then on October 16th, Julie and I updated and presented an updated forecast that showed a deficit of approximately $310,000. The reduction to this forecasted deficit was mainly caused by the reduction in FTEs to the administrative building, as well as delayed hiring across the district. We replaced a lot of senior teaching staff with new freshman staff that sat lower on the salary schedule. And then on January 22nd, Julie and I again updated you with a forecasted deficit of approximately $230,000. This reduction was the result of a building by depil, building by building and department by department expense curtailment, where we sat with each budget stakeholder and went line by line to eliminate any non-essential purchases. Then on May 16th, the projected deficit flipped, and we are realizing a surplus, surplus of approximately $140,000. This reversal was obviously the result of the closures of schools and the ultimate savings from unused stipends, the lack of a need for substitutes, resignations, as well as negotiations with our transportation providers. As you all know, our spring athletics didn't run, and there was a large amount of unused supplies and materials. Then on June 17th, that was our last forecast update. At the time, we were recording a surplus of approximately $150,000. This change, the change in this forecast was due to the special ed office applying for and receiving nearly $140,000 in additional circuit breaker relief. In addition, we realized other savings in athletics, savings from our electrical bills, our overtime accounts, as well as a few resignations that were left unfilled as the schools closed. At the same meeting, the school committee gave administration the approval to use any unused ending balances to prepay special ed tuitions. So now today, I'm here to report a final ending expense surplus of approximately $162,000. Now, so you know, this does include the prepayment of tuitions we just spoke about, and it will be later on in the presentation. So next here, I just added a chart to help explain the forecast to actual. So in forecasting our year-end balance, we came in just about 1% over on our last forecast, meaning the last forecast I gave you, I was about 1% off on my estimates. So I'm gonna quickly run through the change from our last forecast to our final numbers, just so you guys can see what drove each category. So this is by the DESI category, which is what you vote on, so the, just going in order. The first one is administration. This was a change of approximately $83,000. This was due to two main reasons. Both Julie and myself were holding back our discretionary spending accounts, just in case something came up during the year. But with schools closing and the year ending in the positive, nothing, nothing happened. So we both released approximately $81,000 back into the budget. As well, I overestimated our legal costs by approximately $7,000. Now, I'm just gonna run through and highlight the two biggest changes with, within each main category. There are at least 500 accounts, so there are a lot of pluses and minuses, but I'm just highlighting the big ones amongst each one of them. So the next is capital maintenance and operations. This changed by approximately $24,000. This was due to an overestimation of PPE needed for the last few weeks in June and the start of summer school, as well as an overestimation on our natural gas bills. So the schools did close in March, and majority of the winter was over, so we did not thoroughly go through our gas bills to realize savings, because we thought it was just the normal year. The winter was over. We weren't gonna see much savings, but, but in reality, we did. The next one is instructional materials, where we saw about a $44,000 change. This was due to our year-end cleanup. So as you know, the schools closed, but so did most of our vendors. So we spent the last few months chasing these companies just to find out if the materials were ever ordered, were they ever delivered, were they canceled? Have they just not billed us yet? So we were going through POs and invoices relentlessly over June, and it come to find out we were able to free up some, some purchase orders that weren't ended up using, because we were able to cancel the order. In addition to that, there was nearly $31,000 in unconsumed supplies and materials that I did not take into consideration in my prior forecast. Okay, so then the next group is insurance and fixed costs. For here, I overestimated our unemployment liability. So as everyone is aware, the unemployment office is overwhelmed right now, and we have not received a bill from the unemployment office since February. So the past six months, I have been trying to calculate and guess what our unemployment liability is. Sadly, I was $18,000 off. Our unemployment liability right now is estimating around $90,000. I think I had it at about 108. And then the next one is other teaching services. So other teaching services and pupil services, both of these main categories, the change was basically from services not being rendered during the end of the year. And further, we negotiated with our transportation companies to realize savings above and beyond what I previously reported. And in addition, the cafeteria, Catherine Donovan was able to close her deficit, almost $36,000 less than I had anticipated. The biggest one, as you can see, is our tuitions line. So this is a change of approximately $805,000 from our previous forecast. This is, this was mainly caused from the prepayment of tuitions. This ultimately puts the district in a much better place to handle the opening of school this year and any kind of COVID-related expenses. So what you guys allowed us to do in the June school committee meeting was use any unused balance in total from FY '21 to prepay tuitions. We were able to do this extensively, and it helps push off. It, it allowed us to use FY '21 unspent funds to help us to prepay the FY '21 expenses, allowing us to kind of free up funds in FY '21 to cover what I call one-time expenses. So I've highlighted a few of the major differences. This is ultimately the transfer that would need to be done to balance the book. It is wordy, and you can kind of go through the numbers, but if, if you're good, I can kind of move on to the next slide. And this is what the DESI chart of accounts would look like after those transfers are made. And this would ultimately be the motion. I'm gonna kind of stop and answer any questions if you want, or I can keep going, but this would, would be the motion if you do approve it today.
Can you go back one slide, please, Vinnie?
Yep.
So the anticipated additional E and D is $162,000.
Sorry. Yes, that's, that's correct.
All right, so do people, just wanna be sure, and then can you go back one more?
To this one?
Yeah, just the transfer. So I wanna be sure everybody understands what we're doing is we're transferring any additional monies that were left over in all of those funds over to tuitions, which allowed Vinnie to prepay tuitions, which then frees that money up for next year. And then in a little while, you're gonna see that we're gonna take. that we're going to take those monies from tuition and redistribute it amongst the line items. Do people have questions they want to ask, Vinnie?
I do.
Go ahead, Stacy.
I'm just curious. I just want to verify, and I apologize if you hear dogs barking, since I'm the only one home. They seem to be barking a lot. I wanted to make sure that chapter 70, is it correct that it's $773,000 higher than in fiscal year 2001 budget? That than we thought?
Are you referring to a couple of slides ahead?
Yes.
Yeah, so I can just answer the question. For FY 21, in June, we voted the reduced budget to account for a 20% reduction to chapter 70. Word from the state right now is it will be level funded, which is resulting in about $700,000 more than we anticipated.
Okay, and my second question is, can we, going into the new year, negotiate the special education tuitions?
No, that is set by OSD. That is non-negotiable. Non-negotiable. I always say that wrong.
And if they go remote, we still can't negotiate?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
We can push our legislators to negotiate for us, but we cannot.
Okay, thank you very much, Vinnie.
I think we say that a lot when he comes and speaks to us. Anybody else have a question? I can't really see. Okay, Michelle Horgan?
Hi, Vinnie. Just interested in unemployment. We did not lay anyone off during the crisis, correct?
Correct, but if we are your past employer, whether it's your current employer or your previous, if it's within the prior year, we are on the hook for some of your unemployment.
Okay.
And, you know, we do also have a lot of false claims on there as well. So, it will be an uphill battle with the unemployment office to correct those, but we have to pay them and then fight them. So, there has been some fraud where some of our employees had claims put on under their name without them knowing. So, there are a lot of issues.
I have a follow-up question to what Michelle just asked on that unemployment, then. I mean, since we don't know HR person and who's taking up the slack for the HR. So, you have several positions right now. HR payroll type, looking at that stuff, right?
Yep, me, Mary Beth, Jen, and Larry. We are all graciously kicking in.
Okay.
And thank you for wearing that hat. All of you wearing those multiple hats. They look lovely on you.
I just want everybody to understand that that was a position that, you know, and so you, Vinnie, Mary Beth, have had to take over that position, not only to figure out our school plan, but to also figure out the HR stuff. So, that's a lot of work that you guys are going into. So, I want everybody to be aware of that, too.
Thank you. And Jen and Larry.
Okay. Sorry, and Jen and Larry.
And are there any other questions?
I have a question.
Go.
So, that 162 surplus, essentially, and then whatever overs we get from chapter 70 this coming year, it's my understanding all of that's going to flow into our E and D back to the towns. Is that right?
Yes, but in two separate years. So, that 162 flows to it at the end of this year. That 700 will not flow to the end of, I'm sorry. That 162 is the end of FY 20.
Right.
The 700,000 is the end of this year, FY 21.
Right, FY 21. So, just in terms of the percentage, because I know it's our policy that anything over 3% is what rolls back. So, have we already fulfilled our 3% sort of cap? And then, the 162 is anything and above and beyond that, right?
Correct. We already have 3% on hand, so anything we receive now is turned back, sorry.
But the 3% could change, right? Because the 3% changes, so it could be. But we'll get there. We'll do the right thing. All right, so, in the interest of time, because it's our will to try and be done by five. We have a lot to talk about. Are there any questions about what needs to be transferred or why it needs to be transferred? That's good. Okay, so, Vinnie, do you know if it's allowable? Okay, so, we can just read this. We don't have to read off each one.
Correct.
Perfect. Do you want to read that, Dean?
Yeah, would you like me to make a motion?
Yes, thank you.
I move that the Hamilton One Um Regional School Committee approves the FY 20 operating expense budget transfers as recommended here by the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Administration, and as presented on the previous slide entitled "Year-end Transfers."
Second by Stacy. So, we've asked a lot of questions. Is there anything left unsaid? Sounds good. So, we've had a motion and a second to approve the transfers as presented. I'm going to go the way you guys are on my screen for my convenience. Dana?
Yes.
Michelle Horgan?
Yes.
Stacy Matternick?
Yes.
Peter Walzick?
Yes.
Anisee Dick?
Yes.
David Palito?
Yes.
Michelle Bailey? Yes. Fantastic. Thank you, Vinnie. So, then, you have more to tell us. Vinnie, we can't hear you. I think your mic may have gotten pulled up. So, while Vinnie's getting that worked. So, we are allowed, if we have money left over in transportation, to put it into a reserve fund, and then, we're only allowed to use it for transportation in the next year. If we don't use it for transportation in the next year, then in the following year, I believe it rolls into E and D. So, he can hopefully verify that for us. So, that's what we're being asked to do here. So, I do believe, Vinnie, if you go down to where the microphone is, you can click the little up arrow, and you can select to have the built-in speaker or mic instead of your plug-in mic, but I don't. Vinnie, can you shake your head if you can hear me? Was my explanation correct? So, this money is money that was left over in this year's transportation budget. We are allowed to put it in a reserve fund. However, we're only allowed to use it for transportation. So, in the event that we do not use it this year, it will roll into E and D at the end of next year to be used in the following year, sort of like we've been talking about what happens with chapter 70. Is that correct? That is correct. So, that is the explanation of what is on the slide. That comes from honestly all those questions I asked Jeff Sands. I totally knew what that was. So, if we are, it's money that's there, we put it into the reserve fund. That's what we do. So, we're going to vote that number. We can see it again. So, and the motion's on the next slide. So, if we can go to the next slide, we can do that. And then, if we have questions, we can have Vinnie mime them.
Are you ready for the motion, Michelle?
Yes, please.
I move that the Hamilton One Um Regional School Committee approves the FY 20 regional transportation transfers as recommended here by the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Administration, and as presented on the previous slide entitled "Regional Transportation Transfer."
Do we have a second?
Second by Stacy.
Second by Stacy. Do we have any additional questions about that? I mean, I think it's highly likely we won't end up using this money, and it will eventually end up being in excess. I didn't see anybody quickly raise their hands. I'll look again. Nothing. So, we had a motion and a second. So, I think we'll go ahead and vote. Let's see, so we'll still do that in order. Dana?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Michelle Horgan?
Yes.
David Palito?
Yes.
And Michelle Bailey? Yes. Okay.
So, me and Mary Beth switch computers for a moment.
Super. Next. You were lucky. I actually knew that one.
Mary Beth, you can go down whenever you got a second. Okay, so here, I'm trying to explain what the effect of the $162,000 has on our E and D. So, just a quick calculation. Our FY 21 operating expense after offsets is about $35 million. From here, you add in our debt expense of 413, gets you our total of $35.7 million. This is what the state used to calculate the amount we're able to retain in our account. So, we have a local limit of 3%. You take 3% of the $35 million, gets you 1.07. Our prior year local limit was 1.01, which is a difference of $53,000. So, even though we ended the year with $162,000 left over, we are able to retain $53,000 of that as part of our 3%, which leaves $109,000 over the 3%. This would be the amount allowed to hold on. I had a cool thing to do on the next slide, but I don't think it's going to be able to work. So, you can just go to the next slide. Spent a lot of time figuring that out, too. So, this number right here, this chart is what the towns get assessed at in the end. So, I had a cool function to zoom in for you, but it won't work. So, either way, that line right there is E and D. So, where you see $217,000 this year, if nothing else were to go into our E and D, it would be $109,000 that you saw on the previous slide.
So, basically, half.
Correct. But that's only the expense factored in. E and D uses three other things when you calculate it. It's your revenues over your expenses as well, and any revolving account deficit balances. So, I anticipate it will be a little bit more than the 109, but as soon as the audit's over, I can get you a more precise number. But that is just the effect of the expense budget balance. Okay, I'm going to go to the next slide. So, just to remind you guys, as we previously said, our FY 21 chapter 70 revenue will be level funded. So, like I previously said, our FY 21 budget for chapter 70 was approximately $2.9 million. But since it is level funded, you can look at our FY 20 actuals of about $3.7 million. This is a difference of $745,000, which, if nothing changes during the year, will be closed to E and D at the end of FY 21 and used in our FY 23 budget building process to help reduce the town assessments. Okay. So, right here, I am laying out the unbudgeted revenues and expenses for FY 21 to give you guys a brief view of what we're dealing with. So, we're seeing two revenue reductions this year. It's basically our preschool enrollment is dropping, and our school choice in enrollment is also dropping. We had a big graduating class this year with school choice. I believe 18 kids might have graduated, and we are only allowing in, I believe, nine. I'll check my math on that, but it was a difference of approximately five students, which is where you get the $25. In addition to that, some expense increases that we're seeing is in additional furniture that we needed to space kids apart correctly. We had an HVAC study performed for approximately $19,000. Now, this study will come back with a lot of remediations needed. This $105,000 is really just a placeholder, so you guys can account for what might be needed. We ordered additional disinfectant spray guns. We anticipate much more time needed for custodian cleaning. In addition to that, we are seeing an increase in our kindergarten enrollment and the need for a seventh kindergarten teacher. In addition to that, we have the teacher on special assignment that you previously approved. Here, the biggest number is $415,000. This is our anticipation of additional daily and long-term substitutes needed around COVID-19 leaves. We have accounted for the rental of tents for both fall and spring. We have a placeholder for PPE needed for the remainder for the entire school year. I anticipate a cath deficit again this year as the cafeteria is going to be much different this year. We're not sure if we're going to have the à la carte menu, which is where the cafeteria seats most of its revenues and profits. So, we are anticipating an additional deficit for next year. The virtual academy with the state is ranging approximately $24,000, even though that might, that number might increase. We are, as Mary Beth previously said, we are in consultation with a PR and HR consulting firm. Okay, so, all those reductions net out to approximately $1.4 million in additional expenses for next year. We are seeing four major revenue sources to offset that, and it is mainly due to the CARES Act and grants that we are receiving that come out to approximately $515,000. This nets out to a overall increase of approximately $985,000. Just so you know, on the next slide, I am requesting transfers, but I am only, at the time, requesting transfers for things that have already happened and/or will be happening within the next couple of weeks. So, I'm sure there might be a couple of questions, but the next slide is the transfer that would be needed if you approve. If you have any questions.
So, I'm looking for hands to see if there are any questions. Michelle Horgan?
Vinnie, I thought that furniture needed for the social distancing was going to be coming out of the capital improvement.
That's correct. There is approximately, I believe it was $130,000 in the debt. It cost us about $148,000, and you cannot apply any additional expenses over the approved budget from the towns. So, that additional cost has to be picked up in the general fund. At the time, bond council is saying that we can't add that to the debt as we set a ceiling in the boat.
Okay, thank you.
Peter?
Yep, perfect. Thank you.
A couple of questions. I saw that the cost to rent tents was $155,000. What would be the cost to buy?
That is what Tom's looking at right now. The problem is, is...
Storage space.
Yeah.
Well, and stuff like that, cookies and all of that.
And setting them up.
I know a number of folks have suggested that we have volunteers in town store the tents for us in the winter months, and we could use them in fall or spring.
Yep, so we'll get an update from Tom in the future.
Okay. My second question is, I saw $105,000 for HVAC remediation. Is that just to improve circulation? I mean, HVAC does not filter viruses. What is that remediation? Do we know?
Yep, so that is just a placeholder until we get the HVAC report back. It's kind of just a placeholder. It says, even though we went out and did these studies, if we want anything improved, it's going to cost us more. It was only a study we had done.
I see.
Part of the second part of our discussion is deciding when the buildings are safe. Okay, so... Want to go to the next one?
Sorry, one other question. The line item for tuitions around the virtual academy, that part, is there any, if we transfer that $24,000 now to other teaching services, does that in any way obviate us or preclude us from using that for something else?
If you did not use it, we would simply, you know, transfer it out to a different account later on year when we decided we didn't want to. Or if we needed it somewhere else, I would say, transfer it. If we're just not going to use it, we don't need it anywhere, I would just say, leave it there, and it gets closed to E and D at the end of the year.
Okay, so there's no commitment if we do that? And then, as a result of our conversation, that number changes? That doesn't borrow us in the future?
Correct. None of this bars you to anything. You can vote to transfer it differently tomorrow. So, this doesn't tie our hands with anything other than not spending it.
Okay. Okay, so, can you go to the next slide so we can make a motion?
Right there. Yep.
Great. Dana?
I move that the Hamilton One Um Regional School Committee approves the FY 21 operating expense budget transfers as recommended herein by the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Administration, and as presented on the previous slide entitled "Year-end Transfers." and as presented on the previous slide entitled FY21 Transfers.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Stacy. Oh my, Peter?
Quick question. Since we have a placeholder for HVAC, could we put in a placeholder for having a more robust learning management system? Not just Google Classroom, that's just a, you know, the empty shell that was described, something that's truly by definition an LMS.
Yeah, can we do that after we decide if we wanna do that? Versus, you know what I mean? Like if we tran-
Are you asking Vinnie?
I'm asking you, because I'm thinking like, we don't even have a cost estimate, so we don't know what that number would be.
Well, that, yeah, that's why I was hoping we could have had the expert speak last week so we could know what it would cost and how long it would take to implement. That's why I'm frustrated.
Stacy? I just wanna remind people, like, we're coming on 4:30, and we have a lot to cover. So if it's-
The limit, I don't think we should limit ourselves to 5:00.
Stacy?
I was wondering if we could give the excess Chapter 70 or excess money back to the towns before they set the tax rates, just because the tax rates are gonna be really high in Wyndham.
If that's your prerogative, you, of course, can do that. I would just ask that you lowball it just a little bit so we don't fall short ourselves, but if that's what you wanna do.
We're not gonna do that today, because it wasn't on agenda. We can talk about that in the future. Okay?
Okay, yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna scroll down to make sure that the people that ended up being down at the bottom don't have hands up. All right, so we're gonna vote. Your order has changed for some reason. So Peter, you get to vote first.
Am I still unmuted? Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Michelle Horgan?
Yes.
Peter Polito?
Yes.
Michelle Bailey is a yes. Okay, so that has passed, so you have the authority to transfer.
Thank you. That does conclude my presentation. I'm sorry, my microphone broke.
Yeah, so we should probably revisit the E and D question and the, if we were gonna do some sort of reduction after you submit that. That's on, around Halloween, right?
Correct.
Okay, so if you can just remember that for November 1st meeting.
But do they, when does the town set the tax rate? Do we need that before that?
December 1st.
Okay.
So that would be like a whole month in advance. I'm writing it down. Hopefully it'll help me, but we'll see. Okay, so now, we are going to see from the superintendent, we're gonna see, at our last meeting, we asked her to go back and sort of look at ways we can provide remote-only options. We're gonna see two options, and that, well, two options, one for middle school, one for elementary school. So there's really a total of four options. And we are gonna see what's recommended, and then we're gonna talk about it, and then we're gonna vote.
Michelle, were we gonna do the calendar? Are you going out of order on purpose?
Going out of order on purpose, because the calendar might be quick.
Okay.
Okay, maybe we'll vote, well, we don't have the calendar up, so. Just in case people looked at the calendar earlier shortly before this meeting, the superintendent and I had a quick discussion about the fact that parent-teacher conferences were scheduled on two consecutive Tuesdays, which would have given a disadvantage to those students that were coming on Monday, Tuesday, because they would have had both of them. So she did make an adjustment that we'll see in a little bit to make that more favorable, or, you know, more, everybody will get more of the same. I guess more equal is the word.
And Michelle, I'm just trying to get the screen sharing going, so you can give me just one more moment. There we go.
It's not quite there.
One more minute. All right, can folks see that? You've got it?
Yes, thank you.
All right. So what we're talking about this evening is the plan that we would be submitting to the state. There were a number of open questions from our last conversation. I will attempt to give additional information this evening for your consideration. Continuing to want to talk about our key messages, uncertainty is a given, answers will evolve. I feel like I'm a broken record around that. Want to again recognize that learning will change with our new reality, and as this occurs, this will bring both opportunity and loss, and that our goal is to work together with flexibility and collaboration, recognizing one another's positive intent. A couple thoughts about beginning with the end in mind. I think it's important to remember that this will end, and where do we wanna be as a community when it's over? As many people indicated, there are strong emotions around this, and those strong emotions are understandable. We're talking about people's children, so we understand that. And one question is, how can we model flexibility, collaboration, and empathy for the different perspectives as we problem-solve this crisis? So as a reminder, our charge here is to submit a plan to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education by August 10, and that plan is required to have a number of components to it. What is our plan to pivot K-12 learners from in-person, hybrid, and remote as COVID trajectories change? What is our plan to meet the needs of families that need a fully remote option that does not pivot? And how do we meet the needs of our most vulnerable populations? And what you have available to you, and what our community now has available to them, is a, is the plan that has been developed over a period of time, taking in a lot of feedback. Again, our teacher design team, our leadership team, direction from the committee. And what you can see here is that it is a reasonably dense document with lots of detail within it. And what I would want to do is answer any questions that you might have, having looked at it since last Thursday. But it, because of the level of detail, it doesn't make sense to go through the entire document. But it does do the things that we are required to do. We're required to have a letter from the superintendent. We are required to talk about those three environments that we need to shift through. So you see the in-person model, you see the hybrid, and you see the remote. You also see a section dedicated to our special populations, which are our vulnerable populations. And then we also have a section here in terms of full remote programming. So the document that you see in front of you meets the requirement of the Department of Education. But there were a number of questions that the committee raised at our last meeting, and at this point, I'd like to go back and try to frame the responses that we have for you. Okay, so one of the things, just to continue to put out front, there are no right answers here. But what we know from trying to collect data from our community is that our July survey said about 78% were looking for an in-person or hybrid model, and we surveyed again in August. We had about 81% signaling that they were intending to enroll students in a hybrid model. One of the things, before I go into the details, just to frame this, we've spent a lot of time and energy in the creation of this plan, and what we know is that there is just wide disparity in terms of how the community would like us to move forward. The plan is informed by stakeholder input and our educators' expertise around teaching and learning. Until we have a voted-upon plan, are any next steps in terms of implementation stalled? And we are coming up against a deadline for school opening and want to continue to let the community know and the committee know that our overarching goal is to continue to provide the high quality of education our students and families expect and deserve. So one of the open questions from last meeting, the committee tasked us to go back and see what might be possible with other fully remote options. And the committee indicated that we could go outside of the confines of our funding to try to provide answers to you and to give you options. Our document here is the, linked here to the fully remote plan, which you have had access to, is the result of that work. One of the things to be aware with that is that we did look to provide you with what we would consider viable options. There were some ways in which if you hired 20 teachers, you could pull this off without a question, but we didn't see that as a viable option. So we recommended options that we thought were within the realm of reason, but provided what you had directed us to do, which, what would it look like if we had fully remote options that were totally staffed by Hamilton Oneham educators? So in this report, you have those options. And so I'm gonna click on the report now. Let's go back. And for both the committee and for the community, these are linked into the agenda. But what we looked at at the elementary level and at the middle level was what would it look like with Hamilton Oneham teachers in Hamilton Oneham curriculum? The budget implications for this is around 324,000, and it would require hiring four additional teachers. Our educators in the district are not recommending this option, but you do have an analysis of the pros and cons related to this. One of the things that we've heard that many people want are the students to be connected to their home classrooms. This would require having a remote cohort taught by a single teacher. So students in different grade levels would have to come across, come together across the district to engage in instruction with a teacher that most likely they will not know. There's a number of different elements here, given the time. I don't want to rethrill the bullets. You've had a chance to look at this over the weekend. At the middle level, where our folks landed, and we canceled all other plans for Friday and brought our teams in to start thinking about this, what the middle level now believes it's able to do is to take the schedule of teachers and have one of their regularly scheduled teaching blocks just be a remote block. So they're going to be doing the same kind of instruction, but targeting for students that are learning in a remote environment. So at this point, we do believe that we can offer opportunities for Hamilton Oneham educators using Hamilton Oneham curriculum. At the middle level, it would require the addition of another math teacher in order to maintain advanced math options. And this is the option that our educators are recommending. When we go to option B, which is using Hamilton Oneham educators more as facilitators or coaches, and I know one of the public comments was related to, is this what you were intending to do? And you can see this playing out here. After modeling this, we believe that we may be able to pull two teachers, a K-2 and a 3-5 teachers. That would be kind of the coaches in the virtual environment. They would have the ability to watch how students are performing in this digital environment. They would have a dashboard to see when students are struggling. They would be able to reach out to them and intervene if they were having difficulty, and to monitor their progress throughout the instruction. This program also works to connect our youngest students to their homeschool by assigning them to a homeschool classroom, and has a number of opportunities for integration with whole-school programming and most likely these special subjects. What we also know here is that our students will, all students in the districts will be using what's called adaptive technology for practice. Whether, and two of the critical tools that we have set up for the elementary level, our Dreambox and Lexia, these are other tools that students in the full-remote program would also have accessible to them. So what we're looking at here is that you have in front of you, let me get close back up, the two options that we wanted to present to you. We have indicated to you what we are recommending. You know, each option has its pros and cons. Those pros and cons are detailed to you in the memo. And what we wanted to be able to ask you this evening is which of these options feel like they would be most appropriate based on all the feedback you have been receiving? And I wonder, Michelle, if it would make sense to stop there and have the committee weigh it?
Yeah, sounds good. So we're on the like, three-minute plan here for you to make your comments. If we decide we need more, we wanna take more time, that's fine. But we'll start out with three minutes. So the first person I saw was Anna. So we're gonna have Anna speak for three minutes, and then we'll see where it goes from there.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bailey. Before I begin, I wanted to take a moment to reiterate what both Superintendent Banyos and Ms. Bailey have said, which is to remember to be kind and thoughtful. And I wanted to take a moment to personally apologize to you, Superintendent Banyos. My emotions definitely got the best of me last week, and I used words in tone that were not collaborative, were not helpful. They were passionate, and they were earnest, as I always am, but I know that they had an unintended, very negative effect, and I apologize to you. I know we've privately debriefed it, but I wanted the public to hear. And I want to say thank you to those citizens who gave me some really good feedback. I heard citizen feedback that they expect better behavior from me, and I wanna make sure that everyone knows I heard that, and I will do my best to be the best representation of our committee and my own personal standard of conduct. So from the bottom of my heart, I'm sorry, Mary Beth.
Positive intentions are safe.
Please, I'm really trying. Okay, I'll be brief. For option, Virtual Option Academy A, that's not being recommended, is that recommendation being withheld for budget or for pedagogy or for a little bit of both?
Primarily for pedagogy. This is not, we think that the second option that is outlined here provides students with a stronger experience. The second option is designed to be fully remote. When we go to hybrid, part of what we are trying to do is to take advantage of the value of in-person instruction. So if we're trying to integrate a fully remote model into that using instructional strategies that are not designed to be taught in a virtual environment, that does not provide the students with the strongest level of instruction that we believe is possible. Particularly where we are now able to allocate two teachers to be coaching, so we would have a primary-level coach and an intermediate-level coach. So the primary issue here is related to pedagogy. There is a differential in terms of the cost of it. That was definitely a secondary consideration. So I hope that clarified your question.
Yeah, that does, that does. Thank you. In the plan itself, I had a quick question about some of the special populations in the hybrid programming. For students in the TLC, it doesn't sound like they'll have the ability to sort of drop in like they often do. Is that something that's gonna be made available? But the language is, it's a little bit vague, and I just wanna make sure. It talks about, you know, being in support area for short-term behavioral intervention. Will there be interventions in the TLC that's not for behavioral intervention, for social, emotional, other kind of therapy in the TLC for the elementary kids?
Yeah, for all of these, one of the things that we look at is they're individualized for a reason. And so part of what we're looking at here is what can we say that is true across all students? And then for those students that need additional intervention, those interventions will be provided to them. And Special Education Department will be working closely with staff, staff and families to figure out what those are and what the best modality in terms of in-person or remote or whatever it might be is for that particular student. These are fully individualized plans.
No, as they should be. Kind of related to that, there's good context about all the other sort of learning supports, but I didn't see where OT and SLP specifically fall in. but I didn't see where OT and SLP specifically fall in. They're not broken out, but they're not specifically cited. So kids who receive, you know, limited OT, where do where are those where are those going to fall?
So if you look at the plan, you'll see a reference to something called related services. Related services, that that is your OT, that is your PT, that's your speech language. And so there there are variety, variety of ways in which those will be delivered. But I excuse the educational jargon, but the 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 term for those services are related services.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Moving ahead, I think I read it correctly, just want to confirm. The other LBC level students at middle and elementary are going to attend four days a week, but it looks like it's only two days a week in the hybrid model of a high school. Is that right?
For for class programming, so and if Eric, let's see if you can pull Eric up and I can ask him if he can add any additional detail to that.
Michelle, I do have a couple more questions, but I'm talking fast. I want to get credit for a few words.
About a minute.
Okay.
We're looking to bring Eric in, so.
I'm in, I'm already in, Mary Beth.
Okay, great. Eric, could you offer any thoughts on that?
So the the hybrid program at the high school will have the two cohorts, as you know, the first cohort, cohort A, we're calling it right now, is coming into school on Monday and Tuesday. And we're we're actually expanding the time, almost doubling the time in class to cut down on the transitions. So kids will have each of their seven periods over that two days one time.
So so if kids are in an LBC program, unlike at the middle school or elementary, they're coming in four, would they only be in their two person, their two day week cohort at high school?
Not necessarily. The IEP will drive some of the programming that we'll do. We do, we have made room, excuse me, within our schedule to have kids in specialized programs in other days if needed and when needed.
Okay.
Maybe just add to that. So on those other days, that may, those may very well be the days we kids are in where they're receiving those related services.
Okay, okay. Last couple of questions, skip ahead to cleaning and disinfection, page 24. There's still a line about students cleaning their own desks. And when I followed up with Tom Gary last week, he seemed to indicate that that might not be something that we're doing. Just wondering if you could expand on that a little.
Let me see if I can get Tom on the the call here, but it is my understanding that that is not what is happening.
So we should take that out maybe. That's still in there for now, if that's not true. Okay. And then last question. I think all of us are still interested to see the HVAC findings and action steps, but there was one thing on the bottom of page 24 that that drew my attention. When someone's testing positive, it says that for 24 hours, areas frequently made off limits, windows will be left open, but then the building wide ventilation will be shut off, which then makes me wonder if you're isolated one part of the building but turning off the entire ventilation system. Wouldn't that mean if you still have other classes and people meeting, that now they're in a building that actually has the ventilation entirely turned off? Am I misreading that or not?
That level of detail, Anna, I'm gonna need to see if I can get Tom on the line. Line, hold on one second.
Just for reference, I'm looking at the bottom of page 24, the last line of the, and the second to last paragraph. That's helpful.
Just so you know, Anna, if you have one more question, you have five seconds, so it'll have to be a short one.
It's a good one, I do.
And then after you are done, Dana will speak and then Stacy. And then if other people want to speak, if they can just, other people here on the committee want to speak, if they could just let me know and I'll put you in order.
Okay, Tom, Anna has a question about ventilation. I don't know if you were able to hear that, but I'm wondering if you could respond.
Sure, if I could first respond to the to the section where it says students may clean their own desks, providing the cleaning agent is safe. And that was intended not to, for students to disinfect their own desks. But if it's safe to do so, it's always a good lesson to, if they can safely clean it, let's say with water, that makes it easier to disinfect. So as long as the risk is not there, that we wouldn't be asking students to clean others' desks. But I wanted to put that in there, just in case we travel on that road, if that makes sense. Could you repeat the question you had about ventilation?
Yeah, so it's at the bottom, it talks about if some, where's a known positive case of COVID in the building, protocols, blah, 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 blah. And then it says windows will be left open in these areas and the building wide ventilation will be shut off. And I'm wondering how we're going to reconcile quarantining one area of the building and shutting off the ventilation if it's a building wide system? That sounds like you're shutting everything down, even though you're sort of trying to isolate a part of the building. I'm curious to know if that's what you mean and if so, how that would work.
Sure, so.
Tom, can I butt in just for one teeny second first?
Sure.
Okay, so before, so after we vote on the plan, then we're gonna vote on sort of like, how do we determine when it's safe to go into the building? So it'll probably be part of that, but Tom can answer the building side of it. But then like, how will we know when it's safe? That's coming next.
That's why I didn't ask it, I didn't ask it then.
Sure, so it's very rare district wide for classrooms to have ventilation that is shared. The majority of the spaces in the district have individual ventilation. But it would be best practice that if an area did have shared ventilation, that you would, if you had a positive case, that you would turn the ventilation down to mitigate the risk. So that section will evolve as, you know, more consultation is provided.
Okay, last question, two seconds. Will the buses be cleaned throughout the day?
That is still in development with Salter. So once we have that final student roster, we'll be able to shore up the cleaning and disinfection. As a baseline, it would be expected that they would be disinfecting between cohorts on the bus or groups on the bus.
Those are all my questions for now. Thank you both very much.
And and Tom, I talked to Mary Beth and she did say that you are working with the bus company to eliminate transfer buses. So there won't be kids getting on one bus and then hobbling over to another bus. Right?
Correct. So the the goal would be right now in this environment, from home to school and from school to home only.
Which also means like, if Anna's kid wanted to come to my house on Monday, that's a no go.
That's correct. Each one of our bus seats is a premium right now. So we have to make sure, you know, that we're meeting our minimum obligation of home to school and school to home.
Great, I'll take it, subtract that from my time. Dana?
Mary Beth, first of all, I just want to say thank you to to you, but also to the team that went back and and answered that really hard and question that we tasked you to do, and I appreciate the work. And I'm wondering if you could speak a little bit more about this recommended, the new recommended middle school fully remote plan. Just about, I guess, I guess I just want a little more detail about what it sort of, what it would look like. Because what you're saying is that those middle school students who who are fully remote for the year would not now be needing to use, be required to use the state sponsored plan. Is that correct?
That that's, that's correct. That is an option. And as the middle school team unpacked that, what they, and there's trade offs again with every option. We've tried to lay those out for you. But if you have a middle level teacher that's following a schedule and they would have one group in, say, from nine to 10, and another group in from, you know, 10:45 to 11:45, and another group in at 12:15, say that the 12:15 class, instead of being students in front of you, that teacher would log on and teach a class of remote only students. And so that the students would would need to, if their class is scheduled at 10 o'clock, they're gonna be, need to be online at 10 o'clock, because that's when the teacher is free to deliver that instruction. But in, as they unpacked that, they 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 saw ways in which they could take the teacher's schedule and have one section of their day be dedicated to a class of students, except those students will consistently be in a remote class. So those students, colleagues and classmates will all be in the remote only program. And 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 so that they they are going to have their own particular class. It does make it challenging if they, if they leave and come back to a in-person piece, they would be assigned to a different class, because they would no longer be in the remote only class. But that that is the general concept behind it. Those students also, as with the elementary level, would continue to be integrated into the social emotional connections group, which at the middle school is is being entitled a crew group. So did that help Dana?
Did, and that was sort of my next question was, they are still going, so they'll have a cohort of fully remote peers. And then they'll also have some connections with those students who are in the toggling hybrid model, who may or may not be, depending on what's going on in school.
Yeah, exactly. So their classmates that that are in their courses will be their fully remote colleagues. But then they will be integrated with the entire Miles Middle level school population in these crews. Those will be what's often called heterogeneously mixed between students that are in the kind of toggle program versus the students that are in the all remote program.
Thank you, that's very helpful. And so a fully remote, let's say a fully remote family who has a middle school student, who knows that they really need to be fully remote. Now, if this were to pass, could they then choose this middle school academy or the state sponsored option? Or would it be that this is their option now?
What would, what would transpire there is that they they could actually sign, sign up for the full state sponsored option, but there would not be any teacher that we would have available to do that coaching that we spoke of. And and I would speak strongly that that's a critical component of the program. So while it would be available, it would not be something that we would recommend, because we couldn't monitor that for the students. We wouldn't have a teacher watching that student's progress and giving them a shout if things are are not going well.
So at this time, the educators feel like this is the recommended?
This, that is the recommended option for the middle level, yes.
Thank you. I'm gonna stop.
And and Dana, if I could just also reiterate your words that the team that has been involved in trying to build this together, I cannot say enough positive things about. They have worked so hard to try to figure out solutions. Teachers have been thinking about what does good instruction look like? But I I am here presenting for the most part, but it is representative of just tremendous work from our team of administrators and our edu, and our educators in the district.
Okay, Stacy, you're up.
Okay. Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you for everyone who put this plan together. I know it was well thought out and it's not easy. There, you know, you've got a lot of different opinions on this. And I know you're really, safety is a priority. So I thank you for everything that you've gone through so far. I think, and then I also want to make sure, you know, I haven't seen, you know, the HVAC report, but I do know that the Cutler and the Winthrop HVAC is, you know, pretty new. So hopefully, it's doing, those two things are doing well since they are so new. And I think we're still paying on those. So that's not really a question. I guess my real question is more on the high school side. I know the middle school, elementary, you know, those plans can, you know, pretty much be set. But like the high school I'm concerned about and making sure that the scheduling will be okay. I'm concerned for our seniors. I'm concerned for also kids who might have some mental and emotional needs on this, to make sure that we're all working together on this, especially at the high school level. Because unlike elementary and the middle or the elementary school, the high school is really moving around. And so I guess my question to you, Eric, how we're looking at this hybrid model for students at the high school?
So the hybrid model basically allows kids to have their full seven period schedule. We would run the majority of the classes that students selected. There are some that won't run just because they're too small, the the numbers are too small. And we do that every year, so that tends to change over time. But the majority of the classes that kids have requested will run. A student will meet with each of their seven teachers at least one time for 90 minutes over the two days that they're in in class. And then they'll have out of class supports on Wednesday, Thursday and Friday by either their classroom teacher during office hours or a second support teacher that we put into place during other specified hours. So kids like, kids that have AP courses, we're gonna run AP courses. Kids can still choose to do VHS. We have, we have some VHS seats open and sometimes kids will take courses that we generally don't, don't offer. So things are running fairly similarly to what they have in the past.
And I know the high school schedule's always been really tight. So I guess I was just curious to make sure, you know, how, you know, how these classes, what we might stop? Or are you gonna run them in conjecture? I mean, and then there's math and science, like science, it feels like the labs have to be in class. And then are you gonna be running science in a classroom because it's so hard to do labs and that type of stuff? That, I'm just curious about that.
Well, some of those things may move around. We we are in, we've, we talked to a couple of our science teachers already. One of them, a biology teacher, and she's really trying to think of different ways to offer labs. There are some online labs that we can do. There are also some outdoor labs that we can do. So it's really trying to just rethink what things look like in the classroom. Some of our science classrooms are extremely small, so they might have to shift on lab days towards a different place, where we're trying to take advantage of every single space we have in the high school, so that people can not only spread out, but also safely run labs and do some of the, some of the work that we do when we're in school. We don't want to just lock kids into a seat at six feet apart for the entire day. That's just not, that's not, I don't think it's a good practice for for school in general. But it's, it's an opportunity for us, again, to think differently, look outside the box, take some different approaches, take advantage of the technologies we have, be able to go outdoors and shift when 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 we can, when the, when the weather is right.
Thank you, yeah. I know that in college classes, I've heard from a lot of kids, at least even in college, they were having issues doing, you know, the sci, the labs online, that that was just really hard for them. So that was concern going for the high school and trying to figure out. And so I appreciate, you know, you looking into all this and you know, trying to come up with a plan. And I know that Lindsay and Tricia have a lot of, you know, as Tricia said, they, and even Lindsay was talking about how they have programs that can, you know, if, you know, to go back and forth between hybrid and remote too, which works really nice and whatever you guys choose. And I know we do have some time, even though we are voting on a program now. So, thank you, guys.
Stacy, are you done? You have a few more seconds on the clock?
I'm done.
Okay, fantastic. So the next person up is Michelle Hora again.
Thank you. Mary Beth, again, thank you for all that you and the leadership team have have done over the last four weeks, five weeks. I trust what you people have put forth, because you are the professionals. But could you explain to maybe the general public why we couldn't do the five days in the classroom? Half cohort A and then the other cohort B, continuous, continuous learning in person in the classroom and then from afar? That's the first part of my question.
Yeah, you know, that was a a question that was hotly debated about which was the the better model to use. One of the things that we we looked at regarding that was ability to give kids a prolonged period of time to be able to do, to dive into a number of content areas. So for example, if you were doing a half day model at the the high school, you may have to try to get in two classes in a relatively short period of time. That 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 amount of time would would not provide the same kind of experience that, say, a 90 minute opportunity would provide to do a lab or to do a Socratic seminar or something like that. um opportunity would provide to do a lab or to do a Socratic seminar or something like that. The the elementary teachers went back and forth around this and really felt that from a a pedagogy perspective, being able to start a a line of teaching with students and then following it up at the next day um was really helpful as opposed to being able to just spread it out across all five days that their their design served when was was better served by the the two-day model. Um, there was also a lot of question about lunch, um how you would manage that and clean in between each of the sessions. Um, if you're sending a a group home and one in the morning and one in the afternoon, you've got to get the building disinfected and cleaned in between cohorts. Um, it would mean that we would not be able to serve lunch for students during that time. Um, so there were also some real safety and tactical reasons why that particular model ultimately was not the one we moved forward with.
And then I you I think you answered my second question, which was why the Monday, Tuesday model and not a a Monday, Thursday? As a as an adult, I'd be like, woo-hoo, I've got a six-day, you know, weekend or a five-day weekend, whatever.
Yeah, so again, that that too came up and was hotly debated. Um, some of the things that were discussed around that. Um, one piece of that was very much focused on cohort groups and safety that by having in the same group together from Monday and Tuesday, you're doing a cleaning, and then you have another cohort coming in for the next two days, so you weren't mixing up cohorts as much under that model. Um, and then again, there was a general feeling that having the kids in two days um consistently as opposed to spreading them out was was better from an educational perspective. I don't know if any of the principals online want to jump in and add to that, but the those were some of the debates that that took place.
Okay, and lastly, and I I don't think I asked it correctly the first time around, but why can't we do a Monday, Tuesday cohort A?
Mm-hmm.
With its new instruction? And then cohort B is zooming in or viewing live what is being taught with to cohort A, and then on Thursday, Friday, the continuation of the lesson to cohort B in person and cohort A viewing in.
Yeah, that that's a great uh great question, and I and what I'm gonna do because it really has to do with the kind of teaching and learning we want our kids to be engaged in, right? So if you envision trying to mainly to stream a class, that means that the teacher really needs to sit in front of the class and just deliver information to students. Um, when students are in person, that is not the kind of teaching and learning that we are envisioning. Um, we really want students to be um working in in engaged types of activities and that that kind of model does not lend itself well to that. But I'm wondering um Jen or Carolyn, I see you're both on the line here, and this is particularly applicable to the elementary grades. Um, would either of you or Ben, any of you want to jump in here? Jen, I see you're you've unmuted yourself.
Sure, I'm coming. Let me start my video. Um, I think we're really envisioning, just as Mary Beth said, in the elementary classroom, um, kids are really gaining from teachers giving them experiences and feedback in real time, and that's really what we want to see happen in these smaller classrooms when students are present with their teachers for two days a week. We really want interactions between the teachers and the children in front of them. Um, building out different experiences for kids um to practice the work and explore it a little bit deeper when they're at home, but we don't want our teachers to be lecturing in front of the classroom, which I think is sometimes what we envision as a school experience, but that's not how little kids learn to read. It's a lot of small group or just more personalized instruction that we really are asking our teachers, and our teachers work really hard to design those instructional experiences for our youngest students, and they don't really translate exactly onto Zoom. Ben, you want to add to that?
Yeah, I'm I'm thinking about just sort of the 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 rhythm of elementary teaching is sort of this piece where there's some instruction, and then there's some feedback and some practice, and having those those two days, particularly with a smaller group of only, you know, eight or ten kids in front of you, really being able to maximize that that feedback um and that direct instruction piece, so that then we can tee up kids on those other three days to have some very specific um and targeted practice um activities for them to do. Um, so maybe not necessarily everybody going home with the same set of stuff. This would feel a little different from some of the remote stuff we had in the spring, where we've got new stuff, physical stuff, non-screen stuff coming home every week with kids. Um, and having only ten kids at a time really allows us to have a more um targeted sense of what that looks like for each individual student.
Thank you so much.
Michelle, you're muted.
Uh, next person on the list is Peter.
Uh, so just to clarify, are we are we addressing the whole twenty-six-page reopening plan? And we only have, I I just take exception that we only have three minutes to do this.
After we do it, we'll determine if we need more time. This is how we're gonna get it started. You can't take the plane off until you get it down the runway.
Um, okay, so let me ask this. Are we defining our terms properly, remote learning versus independent learning? Because remote learning is actual learning taking place where independent learning is what we did in the fall. Has that been addressed? Are we defining our terms properly? Because we keep using the word remote learning, but I don't I don't see that there's much remote learning going on.
Yes, so e- each of these programs will be designed a little bit differently. Um, that and the the some of the experiences that are occurring in the remote environment will have, um, for example, special subject teachers that may be teaching it. Um, so that's where you might see your PE or your art or something like that, that will be synchronous types of learning. Um, and some of it will be here, here's what we worked on in class, and here's the piece that we need you to do in terms of the next step of this project, and when you come back, this is what we're gonna be working on. And then a a third piece of it will be related to um targeted practice in in key software that one that's called, and I'm speaking particularly to the to the um elementary model right now, but if you'd like to hear detail in either um other level, Peter, be happy to provide it. Um, but there's also uh software that enables students to get responsive feedback and practice, particularly in the area of mathematics and reading. Um, so those types of things can be can be done offline without the teacher being present because it is very much um targeted and personalized to the students. Um, if you'd like more information, I can, that's a quick overview of the elementary. I can bring Craig or Eric back to speak about middle level or or high school.
That would be great. Appreciate it.
Like, would you be willing to just up on for a moment and talk a little bit about what remote learning will look like at the middle level?
Sure. Um, so at the middle school, what we're looking at is looking at the two for a hybrid model, the two days on with teachers where we're gonna spend uh quality time with the students in building them up and giving them guidance towards working independently with a variety of touchpoints during those um remote learning days. So that it's it will feel different than it did this past spring. We'll have those in-person days to have the face-to-face time with the teachers. Um, and then with the students who were to choose a remote-only option, um, those would be in lieu of in-person, they would be in a cohort that would be a class of students who have um remote access to the teacher during that time. I'm not sure if that's that's hitting your question right there, Peter, or if you need to, if you need me to.
Uh, no, yes, sir. Yeah, I just want to make sure that, you know, learning with the teacher is going on, not just assigning doc, you know, worksheets through a Google Classroom.
Right. Now, the the remote learning days, the goal is that that's time for students to collaborate with each other online, to be doing some independent readings, independent work, and then coming back, reflecting on that work and preparing for uh additional independent work when they're with their teachers.
Thank you, sir.
And Eric, do you just want to talk a little bit at the high school level as to what's transpiring there?
Sure, depending on which version of remote learning they're in, if they're remote during hybrid, they the students will have um both a connection with their classroom teacher, and then also we plan to have another content area support person, so another English teacher would be available for other questions when their classroom teacher may be teaching a class to cohort Bs, for example. During the full remote, we are um really pushing to meet the the guidelines of the state around three hundred thirty minutes, whi- which a much larger majority of that would be synchronous online, in-person connections with kids for classwork or for question and answer, for um new learning, et cetera. So just it depends on the model. One one is more of a support model where if we're all in full remote, uh, there there are more connections synchronously with adults and kids.
Thank you, sir.
And I'll just double to any elementary principals. I gave a brief overview, but any any comments you'd like to make about what the remote component of a hybrid model would look like?
So when we um planned with the teacher design team, we discussed having the remote days be tied to um the face-to-face days. So students would go home with some follow-up assignments, maybe some pieces of writing or some additional math work that they would do, and then when they came back to school on their next face-to-face day, they'd be getting the feedback that they needed. In addition to using those platforms, Mary Beth, that you had addressed earlier, that they'd do some additional practice on Lexia um in the K to two classrooms and possibly even K to three, and then all students would also have an opportunity to practice uh the extra math using um Dreambox. The um, we also will have students that are on their remote days that are part of the hybrid model. Um, there will be TAs who will be assigned to those cohorts, who will be doing some uh morning meetings with the kids in the, like, let's say, the B cohort on their remote days would have a TA assigned to that cohort to do some morning meeting Zooms with them, and then also to be available to do some small group follow-up if students had uh questions or needed some additional help. So we're hoping to tightly tie what happens on the remote days to what are happening on the face-to-face days, and the teachers also are planning to do some project-based learning, which will give students an opportunity to um dive into some of their personal interests on those remote days also.
And Carolyn, did I get that right? There's a lot of details across all the levels. Special subjects, can you just make a comment about what 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 the plan is for that particular group of teachers?
Yep. So as of right now, um, the specialists in PE, art, and music will be providing live Zooms for students on Wednesdays. And then they will also be doing asynchronous videos in their subject areas that will also be available for students to do on their remote days. So students will essentially have two opportunities for specials every week. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. And Jen, did you want to add anything?
No, she covered it all.
She's good.
You know what, this I I will say, this is um, and teachers have said this to me, we just need some grace. We need to be able to try things out in this model and really figure out what works best for our students, and that's what we do in usual times, and that's what they're really trying to get their heads around. They've been working all summer to think about the different opportunities they can create for students, um, no matter what the model.
We'll have two minutes.
It seems like we are asking our teachers to do what we did last spring. You know, come up with a plan for for remote learning, but also asking them to do prepping for teaching in person. Do we have any kind of support for teachers in designing and implementing a remote uh learning program while also prepping to do in-person? How are we going to support our teachers?
Um, so so the answer is yes to that, Peter. Um, it varies widely again by grade level. I think what you heard from the elementary level, our TAs will be supporting some of that work. Um, we will have our our special subjects teachers supporting that work. And that that teachers as part of their design for those in-person days will be talking with kids around what is it that you need to be working on when you go home. So it's it's not a brand-new activity, but an extension of what's happening in the um in the in-person days. Um, and again, I at the middle level, I thi- I think you hear that there's folks will be basically teaching their same course level, right? So they're gonna be teaching their same schedule, um, and for the remote learners that are part of that, they will get the remote class. The the work is, as you heard Craig mention, will be aligned to what's happening in the classroom. Um, and at this point, they their plan is that they can manage that and and are not concerned about that. Um, and also even from Eric, that same type of thing, that this is going to be kind of designing a cohesive whole, what part of this is the in-person piece and what part of it is independent work. So and one of the things that might help around this, if you were to walk into a classroom during a typical school day, you don't always see the teacher in front of the classroom um instructing. They may have set a set something up for students, and then they need them to go in and actually engage in some type of independent or group work that continues to meet the learning objective. So that independent and group work that would occur, those are the things that would be happening on the remote days. Um, but the the parts of the learning experience that need to be direct with the teachers, the the design is to try to make have those things occur in the in-person days.
And I have, thank you. I have two quick questions about staffing. I'm looking at page twenty-three. Um, about cleaning and what happens if there's a on a daily basis, what happens if a page responds? Um, do we need to hire more staffing for cleaning, or are we expecting teachers and students to clean?
Tom, would you like to respond to that?
Uh, yeah, it seems to be a bit of background noise. I don't know.
Somebody's printer.
Can I mute as well?
Okay, so the the question, we would not be tasking teachers or students to uh be responding if there was a positive case. Um, this.
Or anything but daily, daily.
So for the daily uh cleaning that's listed in the plan, um that would be tasked to our existing staff. And I'm currently analyzing the hour allocation and the shift um that we currently run right now to see. Um, I found some um ability to be able to maximize the amount of unoccupied clean time just by shifting some schedules.
Jimmy, please mute.
Yeah, just check in if everybody could mute.
It's uh Lindsay W.
It's Lindsay W. Can you just un-promote her from being a panelist?
Oh, sure.
All right.
Uh, sorry, so you said staff would be cleaning. Does staff meaning teachers or staff meaning custodians?
Our custodial staff will be the primary staff that will be cleaning the buildings. Um, and uh Vinnie, earlier in his presentation, uh, did carry a budget amount for additional overtime when needed. Um, that's really tough to predict. I hope that we do not have um the positive cases that we're planning for. Um, but you know, we are, I am looking to utilize existing staffing structure to accomplish the goals uh set forth in the plan. Custodial staffing structure.
Sure, thank you. Also, do I didn't see in the program any um non-contact uh temperature-taking? Is that something we plan on doing? I mean, it's a inexpensive investment, uh, does someone at the door taking temperatures?
Yeah, as of right now, Desi has recommended um in partnership with their recommendations from the Academy of Pediatrics um that the the false positives and false negatives associated with the infrared temperature-taking uh drove them to recommend against that. Um, so as our nursing guidelines continue to be uh formalized with the depart- uh boards of health, um, we will be recommending that folks self-assess before they leave their homes uh to come to school.
I I mean, I understand the false positives, the false high temperatures if you're outside waiting in line to get into school, but you know, homeostasis, if you just give somebody a cool room out of the sun for five minutes and retake, I think it's it's worth the investment. And lastly, I just have an an anecdote. Um, recently, I attended a funeral for a friend, and instead of my thoughts being on this friend and and giving words of condolences and support to the family and friends around me, all of my thoughts were about how people were not socially distancing. They were shaking my hand, they were giving hugs. And the whole time, my thoughts were not about them. They were thoughts on, it was just anxiety-filled. And I am by no means a snowflake. I'm in the trenches, knowing how to stay focused while being fired, fired at. So I am not a snowflake. But I can't imagine our teachers and our students being able to focus on learning when we're in an anxiety-filled environment, six feet apart, wearing masks, worrying about heat index, worrying about mask breaks, hot and humid, no moving between rooms, Spartan rooms with everything removed in order to maintain physical distancing, hand washing. And we keep talking about small group collaboration or group collaboration. It's just not, I don't see how that's going to be possible, maintaining six-foot distances. I just, I don't know how students are going to be focused on learning or teachers focused on teaching when they're worried about their health. And so I'm just wondering what our social emotional plan, education plan is for students dealing with anxiety.
So that has been, in our, our design team, we had three different priorities. And one of them was related to social emotional health and ensuring that we're keeping kids connected. There is a, there are a variety of ways in which that work is, is being set forth. That would be something that we can certainly share with you at another time. But I can assure you that that's a significant concern and how we meet the social emotional needs of students is first and foremost, one of the really critical elements of the plans that were developed. And much like we have for academics, when we have tiers of intervention, that all students get this. And then if students are struggling, they get additional interventions. We think about that in the academic world, but we can also think about that in the social emotional realm. And so where, when we run into students that are struggling in the social emotional realm, what interventions do we have for them? It just looks different than a reading intervention or a math intervention.
And where do they go? If students have an anxiety attack and several students, where do they go? And there's only, not enough staff to normally monitor them. So I just, I'm just wondering about the logistics of where do students go if they're having an anxiety attack and they need to leave the room or take their mask off? Do we send them outside?
No, it's a great question, Peter. And what we, we know around that is our schools will all have counselors available. And those kinds of protocol questions will be the types of questions we'll be unpacking during those first 12 planning days to figure out what's going to make sense. We didn't have, you know, we, we had about 40, between 30 and 40 teachers at any given day. But we don't have all of our teachers back yet. Our teachers will be coming back on August 25th. And at that time, and they will be looking at process and protocol types of questions that can often vary from school to school depending on the actual setup of a school building.
David, did you have questions you wanted to ask?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
So thanks. And my notes sort of all over the place, so I apologize. First thing I want to know is earlier, you know, when we started this Q and A session, the survey screen was left up on the, you know, it got me thinking, why didn't we actually send out a survey over the weekend after this stuff was announced on Thursday? Right, so we had, you know, survey data that changed from, pretty significantly from July to August, still with no information either. But the fact that, you know, we came up with a preliminary plan that we were talking about on Thursday, I'd be really curious to see what those numbers look like. And considering we got about 70 emails over the weekend, I have a, you know, strong feeling that we really got a really good response rate out of there. The other thing, you know, just sort of going through this, in this note, we, we had no, you know, there was an appendix section for nurses' notes. But, you know, I'm really curious about some of those procedures, you know, and, you know, possible HIPAA violations, right? We couldn't line everyone up in front of the school and actually take their temperature because God forbid someone's got a 101 temperature, then, you know, the rumor, you know, it's a small town, the rumor will be, you know, go off. And we definitely couldn't be doing something like that. But at the same time, you know, we do need to actually have a plan in place from our nursing staff that we can actually work off of to make sure that, you know, we're thinking of all those scenarios. You know, my first, like, real question is, did we have, I appreciate the work that you guys did after, you know, conversation on Thursday to sort of go back and to try to create a more robust, you know, hybrid plan and, or, you know, more just sort of thinking about what distance learning or remote learning looks like, you know, from a Hamilton model? You know, do we have, did we bring in any instructional designers and actually trying to create that? Because, you know, distanced learning is not just sticking a, you know, video in the back of the room and, and, you know, having kids at home sitting there watching that, that that's not really what good, solid online learning looks like. So, you know, if, if, we seem to be getting this demand from the public that we want, that we want, you know, this more robust program in-house. Are we, you know, going to the pros to actually make sure that we're doing it correctly? You know, and then the last thing I want to sort of bring up is just, you know, when we were talking about, well, actually, two more things. One, our special populations are actually going to be in the schools four days a week. So have we actually discussed the fact they're actually going to have full exposure to all the students in the district, right? They're not going to be part of Cohort A, Cohort B. They're actually going to be intertwined, you know, in both, which is a little bit concerning to me. And then the other thing is really just, you know, we went through, in assessing new students, like, we were talking about like RTI and things that we already had in place last spring. And, you know, they, those protocols that we already had in place didn't really give us good results in finding students that were falling through the cracks. So how are we going to be using those same techniques to better results this fall? Thanks.
Let me see if I can unpack some of that. So let me start with your intervention question, David. So on, on the online piece, that this would be speaking to the elementary level. If we look at the full remote piece there, that, that software actually has been designed by folks that were looking specifically at remote learning. And that program has built into it assessments that start to indicate when students are struggling. And then that, and there's a dashboard that teachers that are, are coaching in that model can see, see where kids are struggling. And we anticipate, although we haven't decided which teachers would come into this model, and they still have to go through all the professional development. But I would envision something that could look like some small group instruction for kids that are having difficulty with that teacher, along with being able to look at the program in terms of what additional practice might be available to them, to them virtually. In terms, then in terms of students that would be in the hybrid model, that is a question, if you look in the plan, there is a, a, a small piece around that that we know, that we intend to design that again. That's going to be something that needs to be unpacked during those 12 days. We need all of our teachers in to start thinking about what that would look like because it has implications both for the regular classroom and our interventionists. But the, the assessment question, how do we know when kids are struggling? And then what are we going to do about it in terms of intervention? Is, is one of the key components to those days when teachers are coming back to be able to move forward with those, that, that, those types of services. One of the things that's also been discussed around that is the, the first piece that we want to stay focused on when kids get back is just that social emotional health, right? Getting kids in a place where hopefully they'll be more regulated. Then when we're doing that type of assessment, we can get good data back. But we are, we are looking, we know that that's going to be a need. We know that's going to be a greater need than it had been in the past. And looking at where all of this plays out in terms of what is going to be the best modality to deliver those intervention services is, is, are, comes under the category of answers will evolve. I know you brought up a number of different points there, David. What else do I need to hit on in order to answer your questions?
Probably the biggest thing I would say is sort of that special population exposure, right? To, they're not having cohorts. I have another issue about the cohorts also because if you're having the same teacher teaching Cohort A and Cohort B, you're always going to have Cohort B behind about a half a week's work because they haven't seen the in-person instruction yet before. They have a chance to actually be remote. But, you know, but, but by, by having the special population, you know, being in there four days a week, is there any thought or concern around the fact that, you know, they are exposed to the entire population?
The design for those populations are to be, to operate for the most part like self-contained classes. So what we, in a, in a typical model, you would see more integration where students are in and out of those classes, going into different classrooms. In this mode, the intent would be to primarily keep the kids in their, their classroom, which is then therefore a new cohort group. And to look to have that integration happen more actually zooming within a school. So each program, so some of the, the kids that would be in that program may zoom into an experience that's happening in another classroom in the school as, as that integration experience, so that we, we're not crossing cohorts. Again, that, that starts to get really technical depending on the program and the individual students' needs. But I think a quick answer that's generalized is for students that would be in four days a week, their cohort is sticking together and they're not, they're not in a classroom where they would be with Cohort A for two days and then in another classroom where they're in with Cohort B. They're, they're their own classroom. Did that help answer?
Yeah, brought about 75 more questions though, but, but yeah, I mean, you answered it.
We're going to have to get a lot of updates throughout the next month anyway. All right, so it's my turn. I have a few questions. One is for Eric. My biggest concern is that the cohort at the high school is basically half the high school. And I'm not sure how you're going to stagger the schedule to allow students to transfer from room to room. Since it doesn't, it appears students are moving and not teachers.
Great question. So we did think that through. We actually worked with our teacher design team on that and came to the conclusion the best model for us would be, we've extended the time in between classes. And we are looking at classes that range anywhere from as small as six to probably as high as 10 or 11. We really looked at the easiest way. And we found a model that moves one quarter of the entire school population at one time. So instead of the 250 kids all changing class at once, just using 250 as a round number, so half the building approximately. Instead of them moving all at once, half, half of the class would go to class. We would wait, the second half of the class would then go to class. We'd wait again, and then the teachers can move individually if they need to. Most teachers don't need to move, but there are a few that will. So that cuts down our movement to a quarter of the entire building population.
Okay, thank you. And you may as well just stay right on, because now I'm going to add. So one of the great things about the remote learning schedule was the humanity of it. It did not start where you got on the bus at seven o'clock in the morning and then had your first class before most adults have had their first cup of coffee. What is the opportunity here to have our start time be slightly later on the remote days?
So the, the reality of that is a contract issue. We are bound by the teacher's contract for some of our time. So I tried to fit it within the window. I actually started, if you look at the remote schedule, it starts at 8:00 AM instead of 7:40. Because I still have to get the whole 330 minutes in that's required by the Department of Education for the fall. We ran a very abbreviated schedule in the spring. And now Desi is saying that we have to run our schedule 330 minutes a day for kids in, in C time. So we're, we're trying to meet both of those needs while also staying within the times that are built into the teacher's contract.
Carolyn, I was, I've had the opportunity to be by the Winthrop School a couple of days. And I was hoping you could just talk about how has remote, or not remote, in-person learning happened at the Winthrop School this summer?
So I, I think that we did a pretty good job. And I have to give a lot of credit to Stacy and her staff. There was a lot of thought and work that went into it. On any given day, we had about 20 kids in the building across five different, or four different programs. And the nurses did a great job training all the staff around PPE and the safety protocols that were going to be in place. I witnessed on a number of occasions preschoolers who kept their masks on. And I peeked into their classroom a couple of times and they were all staying in their special little spots. And they weren't, you know, getting too close and crossing their six-feet distance. So it, it worked really well. That being said, we only had 20 kids in the building at a time. We did have a dedicated custodian who was cleaning the bathrooms and student bathroom use was being monitored. But we did set up a system that worked really well. And in general, kids were so happy to be walking into that building and seeing teachers and seeing their friends, even though they couldn't touch their friends and hug their friends. We saw some really joyful kids who were happy to be there. So I think that the special ed staff did a really fabulous job with, with the remote learning, I mean, with, with E S Y. And we still have two programs that are continuing and finishing up this week. Do you have any specific questions?
No, I have observed a lot of compliance. And I just think it's important for everybody in the community to know that it seems that little kids can do what we're going to ask them to do.
Yep, and we, you know, we did have to provide some PPE. Some of the children that were in E S Y needed toileting help with adults. And the adults were all gowned up and they followed protocols and they made it work. So I'm really proud of what happened this summer.
And we should really thank those people because they are, they were like the pioneers. And they're the ones that are helping us to learn how to do it better. So we should really thank them. And then my, I guess it's kind of, my last question, then I have a comment. What's the purpose of the tents?
The tents were...
Oh, I know what they are at your place. I'm just like through the whole year.
I'm going to, I'm going to say bye.
Do with the tents at all of these schools? Like, why do we need them? Are they important? I mean...
I can, I can jump in.
Eric, you want to start, jump in?
Sure, at the high school level, the requirements for band and chorus initially are nothing indoors. So if we decided to say run our chorus as usual, they would have to meet outside. They have to be 10 feet apart. And they have to have masks on the entire time while they're practicing or singing. The band, same thing. They would be outside, separated by 10 feet at least. And then, again, only playing outside. So it would serve that purpose in, in one case. Physical education classes, we share our gym with the middle school. So some of our classes may need to go outside. The opportunity to have kids go outside even when the, the weather is not great. I mean, our phys ed teachers take kids outside all, all year round almost. So there's an opportunity there to kind of be safe from weather. And then there are a number of teachers who have expressed a lot of interest in working outside with their kids when, when the weather was right. And, and they feel, I think they feel more comfortable outside. So I think it's a great opportunity for us to help with that anxiety that Peter was, was talking about of people. as they, as they kind of move into this new, this whole new process. Does that help?
Yeah.
So, and one of the things I could add to that, Michelle, when we've been doing this designing work over the past two weeks relatively intensively, as folks were working on, you know, kind of, once they've wrapped their head around here's what needs to be accomplished, many of our groups decided to go outside and work and they socially distanced around a tree and sat in the shade and, and were able to do work there. And it did feel, I think, is a, a more inviting environment and a more relaxed environment than having masks on, although I think many of us got used to the masks after a while. But the, the outdoor learning certainly gives a little bit more flexibility in terms of the, the masking protocols.
And then my one comment is as we decide to do this, there's a lot of parents who have been talking about maybe they're gonna homeschool their kids. And I would implore you to please, please, please really, really consider what your decision will mean for the whole district. Because the district gets our Chapter 70 money based on our enrollment on October the 1st. And so if you remove your child from the school district this year, we won't get any funding to educate them from the state next year. And so I would implore you to please try the remote option. And then if you, after a couple of weeks, try it and you don't like it, that's fine. We would, I mean, fill out a homeschool thing, but I think you'll find that what we would be providing you is the stuff that you would be purchasing to do homeschool anyway. So it's, and probably better. So I would really implore you to think about what your choice to pull your child before October 1st will mean when they return to this district next year, hopefully, because, you know, we'll hopefully be able to go back to school next year. So now I'm gonna ask the committee if they feel comfortable choosing, like if you feel comfortable voting now or if you have more to ask. So Ben, does it, is it on the committee? Have you ever got an opportunity to speak however? So we will offer like that, you know, like can't, all candidates get to speak.
I just want to piggyback on what you just said and that is if a family selects the remote learning option and it isn't working for them, reach out to your classroom teacher, reach out to your building administration, reach out to central office, we want to make this work for everybody. So yeah, if you're in, in a lane that is not working for you, reach out and we're gonna help make it work.
Right, exactly. So, I guess, because I can see everybody except David, if you feel like you would like to vote, put your hand up.
I still have a couple of questions.
All right, it looks like I'm gonna allow one more question per person and then we'll see how it goes.
I would like it very much if we could have just maybe each person speak very briefly.
Yes, that's great. So Peter, it's you. Oh, wait a minute, before we do that, before we do that, can I say? So we're talking now about what plan we think is best to go with. If in fact, we agree with the hybrid model, the way it's been set up, we agree that we're not gonna have all students in person, we're, we're discussing kind of what plan we think is best for remote learning. When we're done with this, then we'll decide if we want to continue talking about how we determine when it is safe to return to school and who will make those determinations.
Can I ask a clarification about the plan?
Yeah.
Does the, does the plan include the two newly recommended? I mean, I'm sorry, the, the...
It, it does.
We're gonna have to decide. We're gonna decide on one of those. So if what's in the plan now isn't what we decide, then it'll be switched around.
But I'm pretty sure right now the two recommended options...
That's what I'm making sure.
Are what is written in the plan.
Part of the plan.
I think they are.
And if I could just clarify, I think what Michelle, you might be getting at, Michelle, is right now the, the big question was what's fully remote option? And so you have two options in front of you. I put the recommended version in the plan, but we can easily switch up the language to the other models that that's what the committee would like to do. I just put it in there as a placeholder. So if the committee were to say we like the other options that were presented, that the current language could come out and the new language could go in. I just need direction from the committee as to which option is preferable to, to you.
Yeah, and I'm just trying to be clear. Right now, we're not going to be voting, are we going into school or not? We're voting on are these the plans we want, when we can go into school? And are these the plans we want when we can't go into school? Okay, all right, so Peter asked first and then Stacy?
Ask, I, I'm sorry, because the time for me before I have to go on my other meeting, I prefer if we can move the vote to Wednesday and talk about it because I have to be off in 10 minutes from another meeting that I've had for years. I can't change my meeting time. I need a couple of minutes to eat before I have to go on to my meeting, so...
I hear you. I bet, you know, I've been trying to push it along, so I'm, I'm not opposed to that. Okay, so if we put off that vote, can we move to the other vote about how we decide when we can go in the building? Let's see, let's see how. I personally want all of us here to vote. So let's put it this way, do you think you will be ready to vote on this within the next five minutes? If you think you will, raise your hand. Okay, so we're gonna try and vote on this part. On Wednesday, we will address how we determine when it's safe to go in the building, when we, it's no longer safe to be in the building, should that happen? Because we'll actually have the Board of Health here at that point. Okay, all right, so Peter, you have like 30 seconds, so...
Well, we, we've changed everything up from the original questions I had. I mean, my questions, I had three questions. Do we need to hire lunch monitors? What happens during cold and flu season? And what happens when someone exhibits symptoms or tests positive in the class or on a bus? Who's quarantined? For how long? Who pays for it?
The last two I think we'll be answering in our Wednesday, it looks like now. Lunch monitors, we've always had, do we need more?
Not at this time. What we're looking to do is have students pre-order their lunch. There'll be two different bag lunches and then they will be dropped off into classrooms. At this moment in time, we are not anticipating needing additional staffing. So again, plans will evolve, but at this moment, we had our food service director in this week, working with us and at this point in time, she is not indicating we need additional staff.
But the, so the teachers are watching the kids eat their lunch, isn't it their lunch and their prep?
No, that would not be the model, Peter. It, it would depend on, again, level, elementary, middle and high school. But at the elementary level, there, there would be people that would be watching the students so that the teachers can take their break.
Almost like a TA flip-flop.
I see.
Okay, Anna?
I was just gonna say, you know, I'm close to being able to vote, but I do think we have more questions and I hate the idea that we're rushing it. So can I, I don't know if this is procedurally allowed, but if Stacy has to go, which I fully respect, but we still want to talk a little, is there a way we could talk through some of this as a majority group? And we hold off officially voting on it until Wednesday? Because I'm really uncomfortable rushing this and there's a couple pieces that I really would like to see and I don't know if they'll be here by Wednesday, but I'm really uncomfortable without seeing the HVAC part and the ventilation part and some of those action steps. It feels, it feels weird to approve a plan that has some kind of major parts missing. And I'm wondering if we, we tell Wednesday, we can vote on both. That will give Stacy a chance to move to her other meeting. I don't think we should adjourn though. I think I want to talk through some of these other things, but I, I don't want to rush our vote.
Other people have to go because some people have to get home so they can do their work and other people have other meetings to go to tonight. So I mean, we've done a great job of getting through a lot. So go ahead, Mary Beth.
Just one thing that would be helpful to me, we are kind of up against it in terms of staffing. And if I had a sense of where the board is leaning on those two fully remote options, that has a lot of impact on how we might staff different models. I'm not asking you to take a vote this evening, but if you could signal which direction you're leaning, that allows us to at least start the process and in, in turn, in terms of figuring this out. We are trying desperately to get our teachers their staffing assignment by Friday. So people who just...
And we will, we, we will be voting on Wednesday. We will be voting. If, if we have to stay here till midnight, we will be voting. And that'll be a really long meeting, my friends. All right, it sounds like, it sounds like there's consensus around postponing till Wednesday. Can we go ahead and vote the calendar then?
Can we, can we just address Mary Beth's issue about just letting her know which way we're, you know, you know, which way we're thinking about for the remote?
So, so should, should we split that into all A, all B? Or should we do A, middle school, A, elementary, B, middle school, B, elementary, Mary Beth? Or do you want to do recommended or alternative?
Yeah, I think the elementary model, do, do people like what they're seeing in terms of the recommended model? Or are they more inclined to support the, the second option? And then we can talk about middle level.
Okay, so this is not a vote, this is a consensus. So we're just gonna raise our hands and say, if you were going to vote, would you vote on A? And is A, is the one with the 340?
That would be all Hamilton Wyndham teachers, not without the learning management system. It would be the Hamilton Wyndham curriculum. So that's...
It's not, let's be honest, it's not the Hamilton.
It's not gonna be, yeah, I think...
Our curriculum would question...
Of what's in person, that, that we will not be able to replicate that online. The other piece of that is, it is highly likely that those will all be, most of them will have to be new hires so that they won't actually be teachers that the students would know. And that's the other downside to it. But they would be people that would be in our employ. That's, that's one option. And then the other option is those K2, 3, 5, Hamilton Wyndham, existing Hamilton Wyndham teachers being kind of the coaches in that, that virtual system with lots of the... emotional in their homeschool. And the other model that is not in their homeschool, they would be kind of a separate entity to themselves.
All right, so just in general, if you were going to vote, would you vote for Model A, which would mean hiring four additional teachers and the like? So... Nope, because we'll have all the time to ask questions in a minute. In, in general, would you vote for A? In general, would you vote for B? Okay, so we have some that are undecided, but in general, we're leaning towards B for elementary. Okay, now for...
The middle level, it's the...
A is the recommended, right?
Right, so the, the version where the teacher, the students would basically be having class with their teachers, that teacher would have, their 10 o'clock class would be their remote class that zooms in and so they're together as a remote group, again, with, with, with support in social, emotional realm with the crew teams for the entire school. So that is the option A. And then the second option is similar to the elementary where the kids would be on LMS with a coach.
Okay, so in general, would you prefer A, which means we hire one teacher and then we zoom in? Or B, we have the coach on the side with the state-sponsored plan? So in general, would you prefer A, the recommended plan? If you would, raise your hand. In general, would you prefer B? Two undecided. So in general, it looks like we're gonna go with the recommended plan.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Okay. I do, I think parents know like school's starting on the 14th and I think that's probably just good enough.
I, I do have a couple tech, I do have a couple things about the calendar, but they're not super substantive, but they are important. I don't know.
Are they things, because I, like I had the question about parent-teacher conferences.
They're easy fixes, I think, they're super easy.
Just email Mary Beth. Okay.
Okay.
Now, we have three minutes till 6:00. Can we look at the school committee calendar?
Look at here.
Thank you for your feedback, everybody, on whether or not you're ready. Like if you're not ready, then there's no reason to rush it. We do have until Friday, so, and we already have a scheduled meeting on Wednesday. So I appreciate, like this is normally our off time and we're not getting off time. And I, I think, I hope the community realizes we don't get paid one penny and we've probably all worked 40 hours in the last week on what's supposed to be our volunteer gig. So I do appreciate everything you've done. And then those who are getting paid have just been working like 24/7, so... I think it's linked to the, isn't the school committee potential calendar linked to the agenda?
Yeah, the agenda, I'm just pulling it up now, Michelle.
Well then, while you're doing that, let's all, well, Vinnie, will you be here on Wednesday? All right, we'll see you then on Wednesday.
All right, I'm just gonna share my screen again, Michelle.
Yep. I roughed out just between now and October, doing the first and third, but I, first and third Wednesday. But, and then obviously, we already have another meeting. So, and then because we've been getting a lot of things late, try and put some structure around that. So the last day to like request like an agenda item would be the second date. So it's like a week ahead of time. That way, if Mary Beth needs to get something ready, we would know. And those are kind of some of the things that we would do. September has five Wednesdays, so possibly having a retreat on the 30th. It's nowhere for you to hit present. When you hit present, it like, it's bigger, but I don't see the present button anywhere.
This is, this is a doc, so it has the present button.
Yeah, that's why. Does anybody have any opposition to kind of? And, and those things in the topics are just like things that I knew were annual, but there's obviously more to talk about. People are good? Okay, so because our bylaws say that we have to have like a schedule, can we just vote on this? Is there any feedback? I don't see anybody giving me any. All right, so we're gonna vote this as our calendar for now. Peter?
Sorry, still here, looking at, so policy review, aren't we meeting prior to that? Aren't we meeting?
Well, I don't, I don't think I've seen a confirmed date. I think we've been talking about dates, but I don't, Michelle, I don't know that we have consensus about when we're meeting this week, but I think we need to nail that down.
That's the day the school committee is gonna be voting on these policies because we have to have them voted before school opens. So you gotta get it done before then.
I'm saying, I thought maybe, are we meeting Thursday? Or Wednesday, I'll free Wednesday after 2:00.
We have a school committee meeting.
We have a school committee meeting at 3:00.
On Wednesday, so...
Originally, we talked about that, or Thursday, I can make it happen Thursday.
Could we do Thursday, too?
In the evening, like late afternoon, early evening.
I, I can't do evening because of work. I can do one, two or three.
Three would be fun, three would work.
On Thursday?
Sure.
But that's not that meeting, that meeting.
Yeah, no, I think, I think we got it, I think we're talking about the meeting to talk about those policies. But Mary Beth, are you available Thursday afternoon?
Potentially, I'd have to move a few things around. You're talking about a 3:00 meeting?
I would prefer it two, but if it has to be three, I'm gonna have to get it done, so...
I have one, I've got a meeting that's from 1:00 to 3:00 that can't be moved. I could probably get there, you know, by the time that one finishes. It's also a Zoom meeting, so I could pop over. But probably the earliest would be like 3:15, I could be there.
Do you guys, could be Peter or Michelle, could we do Thursday at 3:30?
Yes, yep.
Mary Beth, does that help? Give you a minute to take a breath?
Yeah, just a little bit of breathing in between would be great.
Okay, so we'll finish the rest of that offline, but I think that gives us time to post the agenda, right? Within the 48 hours?
Yeah, you just have to do it tomorrow. Yeah, you just have to do it tomorrow.
Okay.
Yep. Tomorrow early. Okay.
So let's vote.
So we're going to vote on this being the calendar and then those dates being like the last day that you can request to have something put on the agenda. And then we can figure out whatever. All right. So Stacy had a delay, but we're going to vote backwards. David?
Do you need a motion?
Oh, yeah. We need a motion to approve that calendar. Thank you for reminding me. Trying to rush it here. Let's go.
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee approve the calendar from August through December 16th as listed in the document before us.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Anna. Did you have anything more you wanted to say, David? You didn't talk about the calendar. Okay. What would you like to vote, David?
I'm good.
Yes.
Michelle Horgan?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Peter Waldeck? Yes. Okay. All right. Thank you. So I, I'm going to, I think I'm going to take a motion to adjourn.
Well, can I ask a clarifying question for Wednesday's meeting?
Yes.
Wednesday meeting, we are going to discuss, debate, whatever, be presented with what school is going to look like when we open and what the criteria for determining whether it's safe to open. We will have the HVAC questions. We will have input from the nurses. We will have input from, we will have a, 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 I guess, a matrix or a rubric to know when to move between whether we're going to be in-person, hybrid or remote, all of this.
What I, what I could respond to that is that the, the process and who will be building the metric out. That we'll talk about the team there. The board of health will be with us and how we will be able to respond and ensure that any issues that came up with the HVAC system are addressed prior to students coming back into the building and staff.
And so. So as you can imagine, this is of great concern to the teachers. And so we'll also just address that we, we will be working to have consensus amongst the whole group so that we know when it's safe. And then we also can figure out when it's going to be a time and we have to go remote because we don't want that to be uncertain and debated throughout the year because that will waste our time on actually getting moved from one place to another.
So will there really be three votes? One vote on the superintendent and the administration's plan? One vote on what school's going to look like. Another vote on what the matrix, the determining factors of whether we're going, how we're going to open and when to switch?
I don't think we'll get to the matrix. I think we'll vote on how we're going to make the matrix. Yeah, it's, it's, it's unsatisfying, right? It's unsatisfying that we don't know if we're going to be ready to open in the hybrid model yet because we don't have the determined data that will tell us that. But we're working towards it. And also last week, Governor Baker announced there's going to be some new metrics he's putting out. So we may have even better data by the time we get to our meeting on Wednesday.
So two rotating.
Will be joining us at that meeting?
Yep. Board of Health will be joining us. I think Lee is coming.
He is going to.
Ting, I think is coming. So we're going to have our experts here that can kind of.
Can I ask a question related to that?
Got to be quick.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, it is. Mary Beth, I, I think one of the best parts that was new to the plan was sort of this discussion about the COVID management team and those people. So it sounds like if I'm interpreting right, that team is forming. Most of the members of that team are going to be together with us on Wednesday. And it's really that team that's going to help inform where we move back and forth. Because I think what Michelle just said is so important that these decisions should not be left to the, the gut feeling of the school committee. It has to be driven by data and medicine and medical advice and some set of objective standards. Because if we have to convene a meeting to decide and then it becomes a, my feeling is this, you know, my risk tolerance might be in one place, Peter's is in another. Like, it shouldn't be a matter of what we feel about it because we are not public health experts. So am I understanding the purpose of that COVID management team correctly?
You are to, you know, what we are working on are what's the metrics that will shift between the different modalities? And then this team would be called in should there need to be a shift over the course of, of the school year. And then just very quickly, in terms of the, the HVAC and other safety pieces, we are working with our union, right, actually tomorrow morning in terms of developing a memorandum of understanding related to the safety issues that need to be resolved before teachers would feel comfortable coming back and quite frankly, students, right? So one of the conditions in terms of being prepared to move into a hybrid model would be that we've met those conditions that are going to be negotiated tomorrow.
And do you think, do you think there's a good chance we might have Tom's report on the HVAC and some of those things back by Wednesday? The place, the placeholders, do you think those might be there?
I know he's, he's got the preliminary report. He's working off of that to ensure that we're able to respond to all of that. So it is possible that on Wednesday we'll have firmer data around that. So stay tuned. Answers will, well, but we're getting there.
Thank you.
Peter, my family has my dinner ready. You have to unmute, ask your question, and then we're going to see about adjournment.
No, just, just to be clear, on Wednesday, we are voting whether we submit this plan, right? And then we vote what school, how we are going to open in the fall.
I do not know if we will be, we, we will vote, how we will know if we open in the fall, yes. But I don't know if we'll vote, yes, let's vote remote. Yes, let's open hybrid. I don't know that we'll vote that because I don't know if we'll have the matrix.
Understood. Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah.
People want.
It's unsatisfying, I know. And I know people want to know. What they should assume is that sometime during the year, they're going to need a plan for remote, so they should plan for that. And then sometime during the year, they will need a plan for hybrid. And so they should know what that plan is. Kind of almost the same thing we're doing. I know it's hard as a parent. I do. I really, I do. I, I am so thankful that mine is old enough that he could be kind of more independent. I know it is so hard. I do. I really do. It's really hard.
Thank you. Go enjoy your dinner.
And I am so sorry that it's taking us this long, but know that we're trying to get to what's best. So.
It has to be factor.
Yeah. All right. Does anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn this meeting at 6:10 PM.
Anybody want to second that?
Second.
Okay.
Like Dana for a second. All right, David?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Michelle Horgan?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Michelle Bailey? Yes. Oh, gosh, that's. Seriously, people, I'm sorry. I've been on like four hours of Zoom already before this meeting, so I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Have a great night. We'll see everybody Wednesday at 3:00.